Okay, welcome everyone that are joining us from home as well as those that are here for the work session. What we're having a work session this evening about is something that we've said since the last election that we'd like to meet with our boards and commissioners at least once a year. And this is the time for the planning commission. So, wanted to get us all together, get from y'all your thoughts, you know, and basically this work session is generally a session for us to hear you and you to hear us. So it's kind of an open forum. I don't care whether we go around the table or if you give a report, either one is absolutely fine. A couple of things I'd like to hear is a status of the comprehensive plan, I would think, where y'all see that basically shaking out and shaping up. And I understand you have a couple of members, one out of the country right now and one home sick, so our prayers are with him. And I think we've got the comments of Ms. Fenixon here. So with that said, Bonnie, how would you like to proceed?
Okay, bear with me because this says we gotta press and talk. Okay, so now I guess I'm okay. I got a red light and I got time. Let's see, he'll help me out. Well, we're happy to be here tonight and happy that we had the opportunity to have a little interchange between the two of us, two groups. I think the comprehensive plan is finally coming to a conclusion. We've got another work session, I think, let's see, is it on the 14th?
The 16th.
The 16th, yeah, right before our next meeting. And Wiley, what do you think? That's probably gonna be the last, or?
What we're gonna do is we're fusing all the chapters.
Cue you, Mike.
All right, technology. We've gone through chapter by chapter in the comprehensive plan and Mr. O'Connell, who's in the audience today, has shepherded that through very well with the planning commission.
He certainly has.
We are at the point now where we're fusing all the chapters together. We're looking over at one more good time to make sure we don't have any discrepancies and to make sure it reads consistently throughout the document. We're gonna have that document ready for a planning commission discussion at the work session on the 16th. And, you know, I don't know what questions we'll get. I don't feel like we're gonna get a lot of questions, but we will just make sure that everybody's comfortable with it before we pass it on for a public hearing and then ultimately, of course, to the city council for their public hearing.
Okay, so in general, are we talking about the summer for us to see it, or what are you talking about?
I would say the summer's not out of the question. It sort of depends, you know, on the feedback we get from the planning commission, but we're not anticipating major hiccups at this point. And correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Rimer.
No, I don't think so. I think we're pretty much, it's getting very close. I think we're very close.
Sure. Okay, since it's such a large document and with technology these days, one thing that would help us as council, since we, while I know I'd love to read that thing from cover to cover, I'd kinda like a change synopsis, like a line-out document, you know, that basically says where the changes are being made and basically going through those so that we understand, you know, this is as a result of the citizen survey, this is as a result of this or that, or whatever reasoning that the changes are, something to tease.
Absolutely, and correct me if I'm wrong, Danan, but I believe we're working on that very issue right now to make sure we identify all the changes.
Yeah.
And then it hasn't escaped me, and so I wanna, I just wanna be upfront with it, that there's been a couple of times when council and planning commission have been 180 degrees out.
Now, when did you hear that?
So, instead of hiding behind that, you know, and saying, okay, well, I think the two issues, one was a business in the corridor, it was a tattoo parlor, the other one was-
Electronic signs.
Electronic signs. And so I am okay if we have, if y'all had some feelings on that, that you think that council missed or whatever, it's okay in this forum. This is a forum to discuss, okay? So I wanna make sure that if that frustrated you in some way, or you thought that maybe we should've gotten together to have a work session, then let us hear that. But other than that, I'll just open the floor. Anybody you want me to take it around the room?
Well, I think for us, we just kinda felt like there wasn't a lot of explanation as to why, and I guess that was kinda what we probably wanted to hear maybe, so we would know why you voted against it. Because we had kind of discussed a number of things and we felt like we just didn't quite know what your rationale was. We fully understand that you have the, you certainly have the right to do as you choose, but I guess we just felt like we needed some guidance as to why.
Gotcha. So there was one that we voted against and one that we voted for, right?
Yeah, for the business particularly, because I think that was the one that, you know, we kinda had that feeling that we just would like to know and have some guidance from y'all as to what was the reason. And correct me if, you know, y'all feel, I mean, that was kinda what we discussed, I think, at our meeting. All of us were kinda, had that consensus, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, ma'am. For as long as I've been a commissioner, it's been my understanding that one of the main things that we need to do is draw businesses to the city. I mean, we've got to, for tax, obviously for tax purposes, so. And that being a business that had no peer competitor in the city, so it wouldn't push anything out, like a Walmart, and being owned by a Navy veteran, I just, I personally felt like it was a two-inch putt. I mean, it was as close to a sure thing as you could get, was my personal opinion.
Yeah. How about on the electronic signs? Did you have any thoughts on that?
Yes, sir, I did. Again, I could've swore I heard this at some point, I've been a commissioner for a while, that we didn't want With Creek to look like Mercury Boulevard. We, that we wanted to keep the small-town feel. You hear that all the time. It's like a buzzword around here, "small-town feel." And I, so I did not understand why we would allow variable message signs. Understanding, it's not like they're gonna explode and we'll have 100 of them up and down With Creek, we might just get one or two, but I didn't, I don't feel strongly about that as I do the business that tried to come in, but I do not understand why that decision was made.
Okay. We'll just go around the table. He volunteered to start, so we'll let him go.
Yeah, I think my feeling is, I think the other thing that, thanks, Tom, was I think it was actually the gate auto sales that started. We, I think we recommended against the auto place there, and that came in. So it wasn't, to me, it was like, I could live with any of the decisions. I just didn't know what, I never really heard why they were different. And I felt like if we were gonna differ from y'all, it would be nice to get that, I mean, as a systematic thing, just to get the feedback from you guys, as to why you voted the way you did, because, I mean, I, certainly not the last person on this earth to, I mean, I didn't really mind that anybody even had different ideas, different than mine. I just wanted the feedback. That was really the main thing for me personally.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thomas?
From a council perspective. Well, if it's, I'd like to get the responses from the rest of the planning commission, so I make sure I answer everybody's sentiments, if that's all right.
Okay.
All right, well, I think one of the things that, as a commission, we try to do, and we try to be pretty thorough about researching the topics. We try to serve as almost advisory for the council. We know that you guys have a lot on your plate, so hey, let us do a lot of the heavy lifting, a lot of the research, you know, make the phone calls, try to figure, you know, some of the background. And we do spend a lot of time researching, we spend a lot of time discussing some of these issues. And I know even when I first started, it was the livestock. I think that was kinda the hot topic at the time, was the livestock. And I think that was even something, and I know I did a lot of research on that, and I think that that ended up being tweaked a little bit, too. But for me, I think really having a sense of direction and a sense of, I guess, what kind of objectives that council has for the city so that we can make better planning decisions to try to meet those objectives. And one of the things that we do take into consideration quite a bit, and especially with electronic signs, is the citizen survey and the feedback from that. And that was one of the things, you know, there was a lot of responses, we don't want With Creek to look like Mercury, or we don't want it to be Hampton or Newport News. So, and we did also have a speaker come and give some comments at that meeting, too, and we took all that to heart. And so I think that that's why we came up with that decision. But just a general blanket statement, just really kinda the goals and objectives from council as to what we should take to heart when we're trying to plan for the community is what I'd like to see.
Okay.
I'm Libby Gribble, I'm a new kid on the block here, but I think I just expressed the same sentiments, really. I had numerous people actually call me and contact me regarding the decision on the tattoo parlor. And we have discussed, we had discussed that in length, and I think a lot of the public felt that there really was no explanation given, that the decision to not allow that was sort of a done deal before the council ever met. And that's always concerning when the public has the impression that decisions are being made behind closed doors. And I think that's something that we, as a commission and as a council, need to be on guard, that that perception is not put out to the public. As far as electronic signs go, I mean, the variable messaging, I was in agreement with the commission because we know that they're expensive and we know that likely there will not be hundreds of them on there, but, you know, as time goes on and costs go down and people, businesses see the benefit of those signs, conceivably you could have every business on With Creek Road with a variable sign, which I think is, you know, I think of Las Vegas, you know, constantly blinking. And so I would express the same sentiments, that we were just, I think, would like some explanation or some guidance on what drove the decisions that y'all made there. Because it made us feel that we had discussed it in length, and I'm sure y'all have as well, and we just could not understand the rationale, so.
Okay. And I think, finally, I want to interject, on the heels, too, it was that three-for-three thing, and I was thinking, the auto sales, it was like, we asked, you know, we said this, you said 180, and then we did the second one, 180, third one, after a while, we're thinking, well, you know, a lot of 180s.
Well, I think council felt the same way, so.
It bothered us, too.
Yep, bothered us quite a bit. So with that said, I guess, is that all the planning commission members?
Yes.
All right, Thomas?
Well, speaking specifically to those 180s, I guess that's what we're calling them. You know, as far as the tattoo shop goes, I did vote in favor of that. I agree with you. I thought it was a good opportunity for us to attract a new business, and I had no reservations about that, and that I did support. As far as the electronic signs, you know, I kinda took the stance of the vice mayor on that, you know. It bothers me sometimes when government of any level has, you know, a power to do something that citizens and the free market cannot. And I don't foresee, you know, hundreds of signs or the look of Mercury Boulevard, or, you know, whatever your reference was, I don't foresee that happening. And if it does, you know, that ordinance we looked at for those electronic signs, I mean, some of it, it was two or three pages of things that the businesses and the city has to adhere to to even run those signs. So I think it's, I think it's well-controlled, and I think it's a good thing for businesses to have, if they should choose to have it. But that's my feelings on these 180s, unless and if y'all have questions with me.
No, that's not a question. All right, Buddy?
Well, for me, the tattoo parlor, the total thing, was the location. I knew of empty spaces that it would fit a lot better. And in fact, after the vote, I went to the economic development people and said, please re-approach these people and see if they would consider some of these empty places that this business fits a lot better than the one they were trying to go into. And that was totally it for me, just the location of it. And it wasn't a thing that, yeah, we'll approve it if you go somewhere else, it's either yes or no. And so at that location, for me, it was a no. The electronic signs, I agree with Kerry that I don't like the government to be able to do something that everybody else can't do. We tried it with the schools and the city, and there seemed to be no complaints, there seemed to be no problem with them. The restrictions, they can't flash, so they're not gonna be flashing. The brightness is tightly controlled, the message has to stay on there for, I don't, eight seconds or something. So I don't know what else you could put on there that would make them more palatable for people that really just don't want them. Just to say it's gonna look like Mercury Boulevard, well, as far as I'm concerned, the sign at Farm Fresh, that big, huge thing where they go out there and change the letters every day, is more offensive to me than a sign that we've got it regulated as to the brightness, how long the message can be on there, and that's where our books.
All right, we're gonna skip Randy and Wayne and Evie and myself, because I always get to talk last, but Jana?
I appreciate your comments. As far as the light-up signs, I actually went into the meeting prepared to vote, to agree with the planning commission and vote no on that. And I'm not a huge fan of the light-up sign in front of the middle school, as I stated. I just don't think it fits that great with that nice historic-type building. But, you know, some of my council members did have a point. Councilman Freeman was persuasive, and, you know, his comment to me about the gas stations that have to go out there and change their, the price they're required to do by law every day, whether it's raining or whatever, and I thought, you know, that would be a convenience for a business that has to change their sign every single day to be able to do that. And so I took that point to heart, and obviously, I would've gotten outvoted anyway had I said no, but, you know, there is part of me that thinks, oh, maybe I should've stuck to that and said, "just for gas stations," you know, but we do have signs that light up at night, you know, the pharmacy, they, the only difference is it doesn't put words that change every second. So, you know, we do have light-up signs, so, you know, and the point that we are allowing the city to do something that businesses are not. And I think it needs to be an even playing field. So we either need to say the city doesn't, can't do that anymore, or businesses can't. So that was my feeling on that. For the tattoo parlor, you know, when I ran, I stated, I'm not a huge proponent of making exceptions to ordinances. You know, we made exceptions, not we. There were exceptions made to ordinances on the legacy project, to the setback off victory, to the number of stories that's allowed. I know a lot of people were not happy with that. I think when you make exception, and ordinance is put in place for a reason, I don't, it wasn't around when that ordinance was created that disallows that type of business, I don't know what the reasoning behind that was. But I think when you start making exceptions to our ordinances, you open yourself up. You know, any other development, you know, that builds on victory can request that same exception to their setback and their height. And I think you have a hard time justifying saying no to one business when you've said yes to another. And so in my mind, I thought, you know, what if down the road we have another business that wants to come in that's maybe not desirable by the community, who might even bring in more revenue than the tattoo parlor? And how do we say no to that business when we've already said yes to another one? So my feeling is, if our community wants, thinks that type of business is good for our community, then we should change the ordinance rather than make an exception, because I think making an exception to an ordinance opens us up for something we might not want in the future. So, you know, I would be interested in looking at changing the ordinance if the majority of our community, that's a business they think, they feel that would be work in our city. The other thing is, I got not one single email or phone call from a citizen stating that they were in support of that. I got one email and it was not in support. Not that that was what I made my major basis on, but that's just something to throw out there. You know, I think if, I would've liked if the majority of our citizens were in favor of that, to have gotten some emails saying, hey, we really want this, you know, because maybe that would've been like, well, maybe this is a case. Because I'm not saying I would never make an exception, but it might've swayed my opinion a little bit.
Well, I got two emails, one for, one against, so, but it was only two. Rather than try to justify my vote, I think that we agree, y'all used the word "underutilized", and we know there's a lack of communication, and I'd like to talk about what we can do to make this better so that we kinda get along better and can do, you know, better in the future. I did get one call from, well, in the last three or four years, I've actually gotten two calls from a person on the planning commission to say, hey, what, you know, why did you do this, or what's the deal? But other than that, unless I just happen to see Jay, Bonnie, or somebody on the street, I hardly ever talk to y'all at all. And I don't know what form you would prefer this communication to be in, but I do think we oughta fix it if we can.
All right, Bud?
Yes, first relative to the street signs, I did in the past and still continue to support the small, quiet, town atmosphere. And when we talked about those signs, Kerry and I both agreed that we don't like for the government to be able to do things that the private citizen can't do. And when we first talked about not wanting those signs in the city, and then we put the one at the middle school, we put so many restrictions on that, and the brilliance of it was restricted, and it doesn't flash and it doesn't move, that I don't think that if a few of those signs go up down With Creek Road, it will look like Mercury Boulevard because the brilliance is restricted and there aren't any flashy moving parts, and we have those kind of restrictions. And so if it's a dim electronic sign, a relatively dim electronic sign, similar to that at the middle school, it gives people the ability to change prices on fuel from day-to-day basis, not having to go out in the rain and put little stickers up, and it gives them the same freedom that private, that the government has. And so that was the reason I supported the change in the signs. Relative to the tattoo parlor, I did get several phone calls requesting not to pass that, and I had at least two personal face-to-face conversations. I know that the face-to-face conversations and at least two of the phone calls were relative to the position of it, where it was physically located. And I don't remember the details on the others, but I did get several phone calls to, please don't do that. I received none to do it, and that's the reason I voted the way I did.
All right, Dave?
Let me interject one thing real quick on the signs. The main thing that I had with the signs, I said I wasn't gonna justify it, but I am real quick, is that that's the way signs are nowadays. You can't get a sign painted or something like that. You, if you're gonna put up a sign, that's just the way signs are. So it just seemed good to me.
All right, Dave?
Good evening to all. With regard to the electronic signs, I was not comfortable with the double standard that existed between the government and non-government, and we were able to fix that. I felt that there were adequate regulations in place to prevent unsightly signs and take it for what it's worth, but I remember the article in the Daily Press that came out shortly after the vote, and I didn't get the impression from the business owners that were interviewed, that there was a whole lot of interest in electronic signs. So those were the issues that I considered in making my decision. Concerning the tattoo parlor, we talk a lot about gateway quality. I hear that term quite a bit. I was not comfortable with the location for that proposed business because I did not feel that it was consistent with our gateway standards. And also, I believe that the regulation that we have in place was put there for a reason. I trust the wisdom of those involved in that decision. I was certainly not on council at the time, and I didn't think that this business rose to the level of making an exception to the existing ordinance. And I did offer an explanation when asked by Mr. Reyes, our Daily Press reporter, the reasoning behind my vote, and I offered this explanation to him. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I add something?
Sure.
That I didn't think of. I did have somebody contact me after that meeting and say, why didn't you guys talk about it? And I said, well, you know, when I think back, somebody said, do you have any questions? And I didn't have any questions because I sort of had formulated and nobody, I'm always open to people swaying my mind, that bring up something I didn't think about that causes me to change my mind, and that didn't happen. But I am mindful of that, and I think it is important, as you said, for the community, too, for them to hear why we're voting. And so I did take that comment to heart, and we'll make sure I try in the future, if I'm voting a certain way, to express why I, you know, especially if we diverge, you know, why that decision was made. I do think that that's important, and I'm, you know, I feel like, at least for me personally, I was remiss in doing that.
Okay. I'm gonna take the conversation back out to a higher level. Instead of talking about each and every one, I will tell you that I agree with the planning commission on one of them, wasn't there for one of the vote on the tattoo parlor, but I would've supported the majority of council on that one, that, and the electronic signs, I think has been well-stated. But let me, let me go back to one of Jana's comments, you know, as far as the ordinances. We should be looking, I think the tattoo parlor is an example, was specifically excluded from the ordinances. It's been that way forever. You know, tattoo parlors have come into fruition and on their own, and I don't wanna judge people or do any of that, but it was basically something that was almost in our founding as a city and there forever, right? So it had to be a harder discussion. So what I would say is, take that case and sort of learn from it. If it's controversial and you're gonna put it right in the middle of your gateway, which I think is also a good term, because that's what we got to listen to every time we talked about Walmart or we talked about anything else, it was gateway. It was, it was right on your main thoroughfare, right? And I would tell you that council, for the things that we do approve or did really not get a say on, I will refer you to a few businesses there around Georgia's restaurant. I've heard a lot about them, and they're allowed by our ordinance, okay? And so I think spreading that throughout the city, I think there, do I think there's a place for that business? Yes. Do I think it's on Victory Boulevard? No. And you gotta kind of factor that into your thinking. Electronic signs, I think that's a way to take in, because it's from the 20th century to the 21st, right? Okay, so it's like, if we think that the little fold-up plastic letters on Farm Fresh is attractive, I would ask us to all take a step back and look at, you know, your TV today versus the TV in 1950. All right, so some things I think that you can take forward and not change your character, but change your technology. And the one thing that those signs allow us to do, and what our current ordinances do not allow the businesses to do, is communicate. If you wanna stick a wooden sign out there with your name on it and never have another message for the community, now, we've got what you need, and it's not really working for us. But as the community saw, if we want to communicate from our schools to our citizens, we want to be able to sell our products and our goods, one of the things that you say, that you sell is your appearance. If you're tacky in appearance, you know, you're probably not gonna win customers. If you're good in your appearance and you have a solid message, you probably are. So I think that was just an improvement in technology that I thought the time was right for. As far as the communication between, oh, and let me go with the third one, you know, I would tell us all to watch very carefully on this. Let's go back to the auto sales place. This was a business that had lost their grandfather, right? Had lost their grandfather clause, and we reinstituted a business, and that was really council, we reinstituted a business in the middle of a residential- And that was really council, we reinstituted a business in the middle of a residential neighborhood. So I would say that was something that, you know, looking back on it, that didn't go well for us. And I think Planning Commission was, was in front of us on that. Okay, so those being said, communication. What I don't want to see come out of this is communication trying to convince council to go the way of the Planning Commission. Because I think that it would be counterproductive. Do I think that there is some way for us to communicate back to you when we see it? One, I don't think it would be something I would like more people just saying, oh, well, you should vote this way because we did, okay? We already get the report on how you voted, okay? We don't get all your comments. I would say, Randy, maybe we should, you know, see some of the striking comments from Planning Commission, you know, some of the thoughts in the report that come to us instead of it passed by a vote of five to one or four to, four to two or whatever. Anything that we couldn't have thought of, something controversial. But I really don't want that, I really don't want that communication until after council's made its decision. We see your decision. If we have a question, we can call down. But I don't want y'all trying to sell your decision to us, okay? Because I think that would be in the way of good government, all right? Which is independent decision-making. If we have a question, we should call down after we vote. If we agree, I think it's, it's no problem. If we, if we go 180 out, I think we owe you, here was council's thoughts in three or four bullets, right? And that would solve the communication gap. We didn't see it as a fit for this location. We didn't, we thought the ordinance was well-controlled as written. We thought that the zoning didn't match here, those sorts of things. I will tell you, as we approach the biggest thing that we do together, which is the comprehensive plan, I'm interested also in, in thoughts on that particular thing. I know we'll have at least one joint work session. Is that right, Randy?
Yeah? It's been a long time since we got in this part in the process, and, and I missed that part of it. So that tells you how long ago it was. The comprehensive plan update was three-quarters to ninety percent of the way through when I came in, in June of 2009, last time. When the Planning Commission is done, I think it would be very appropriate to have a joint session between the Planning Commission's recommendation and your deliberations in public hearing to allow the Planning Commission and staff simply the ability to do, in a way what you had suggested previously, Mayor, which is highlight the significant changes, explain why those changes were made. So not so much a deliberative discussion, but an information exchange, which would then set up, would set up nicely for both the community and for council to move to the public hearing stage and the additional work sessions. So we will definitely schedule that. I think that would be a great transition.
And the one thing that concerns me about the timing of the comprehensive plan, summer's not a, not a, a great time for the citizen involvement, okay? So I know it's been a long time coming. If we end up there in July, I would just ask us to slide it over and recognize that in September, normally the council's pretty slammed, right? Because we've, we've taken three months of, of one meeting a month, and so we build up this agenda that's rather large. So what I would say, but, but I don't want to do it and say, hey, we did that in July, okay? So just put that into your mindset. If you need the extra time to take it into the fall, that's fine. If you can get it to us before July, that's even better. But just don't let us go too far into the deep summer, or we're just going to have an empty room out here, and we're going to be on our own, okay?
Well, I totally, and in no way, and I know I speak for everyone on planning, at every meeting that we have almost, we, we, anybody that comes before us with, for a public hearing, at the end, we always try to let them know that we are only a recommending body, and we have no ability to make the decision other than just to recommend. And I certainly would never want the Plan, the Planning Commission in any way to try to, you know, overstep, and wouldn't want the council to rub a stamp, anything that we do, because the purpose of our, our Planning Commission is to, as I think as Angie said, and said, well, we, we sort of try to dig out the, I guess, the facts that we can, and maybe save y'all some legwork and pass it to you. Then it's up to y'all ultimately to decide whether we've done, whether we have come forward with enough for y'all to make the decision that would agree with us. Or if you have reasons other, otherwise, certainly, and you do, and I, and I think the tattoo parlor, I think certainly the explanation of the location, I think if it'd been at a different location, I think y'all might have, might have had a different vote. I can't say you would have passed it, but I think you would have had a few more members on board for it. And I can understand that. The variable sign, I also understand that, I certainly, I guess, from the standpoint that we had, I guess we just felt really strongly that we do really want to keep things maintained, so they don't look, you know. But I know that not everybody's going to have a, an electronic sign. It's not going to happen. And, and coming from the standpoint that y'all are, that you want to have an even playing field, that you don't want government to have more rights than the individual, I certainly understand that. And what I had thought, and this may not be possible, but if, it seemed like to me it would be good if we could have something come to us, where we've sent something to y'all. If you could, just maybe have the clerk, just maybe a couple of lines, just so we could have some explanation in case somebody comes to us and asks us, or just for our own benefit, we want to know. So, you know, and this, and this is only to make us do our job better. In no way are we indicating that anybody should, should do everything we say. But in order for us to have, I guess, the perspective, the proper perspective that we need to kind of see where y'all are going. And I do agree totally that we should have some meetings with y'all, occasionally, maybe a couple a year, or something that we can, you know, just, just casually talk about what y'all feel is the, the vision. So we keep the vision, and we're not just spinning our wheels either. I mean, we want to, you know, we certainly want to be beneficial. We want to serve at y'all's discretion, but we want to be beneficial. We don't want to be, you know, sitting up here just, you know, being totally, I guess, off track. We want to be, we want to be somewhat on the same vision with y'all. So, and I don't know if anybody else has anything to say. I've probably said more than enough.
Do you mind if I chime in?
Go right ahead.
Completely piggyback on your comments.
Go right ahead.
One of my notes is, and I think that's right, right on your coattails there, having some meetings periodically where we do some advanced planning, and, and we just go over and review what's happening in our community. What are the site plans that have come through? What are the new developments? What are some reuses, and how do you guys feel about these? Is, or what are some lessons learned? What do you think maybe could have been done differently, even if it's by right? Just to discuss, hey, what's going on in the community? How are we growing? Is this good? Is this something we need to control more? You know, I think that would be very helpful.
We used to have some, I think, years ago, we kind of used to have, I remember one thing we had, we did probably, I don't know what we would call it, a retreat or something. And we, we have done that, where we've, you know, we've actually met for a couple of days or something, and just, you know, hashed everything back. And, you know, that's good, because it kind of keeps us in the loop. Sometimes, you know, sometimes we don't feel like we're quite in the loop, I think. That might be where, you know, there's a little disconnect, and we want to be. I mean, we, we try to stay up on everything, and the, and the planning department certainly does a great job trying to, you know, keep us abreast on what's going on. But, you know, we really, I, I think that could be maybe a little bit improved. Not, not from their standpoint. Maybe we need to be more aggressive in doing that, but, you know, sometimes we do the best we can, and that might not be quite good enough all the time, but we try.
Jane, just to, just to comment, I want to make it clear that I really value the inputs from your commission, okay?
Thank you. We try.
I think there's one thing that we could do better. You know, timeliness in, in response to a certain action is really important in many cases. And in cases like the tattoo parlor, okay? It would have been very easy for me to say, I'm voting no, because I've had several phone calls, okay? And, and, and some personal conversations where I was asked to please vote no. I've had nothing in favor of it. A simple thing like that, when I made my vote, would have made it a lot easier. And so if we could make a timely response like that, especially when we are in opposition to what has been, been recommended.
Yep, I agree. So I'm going to open the floor, go ahead, because I don't want to open the floor to one other group that's here.
Yeah, just one other comment. All of our boards are timely, and they should remain that way. And we walk a fine line when we start talking about conversations prior to y'all's decisions, or y'all vice versa prior to ours. The public could very easily get the feeling that we're trying to force our way on you and vice versa. And it should never be that way. I don't mind justifying to you how I voted after I voted.
Right.
And when you vote on things like this, you've got to be very careful what you say, because that owner is liable to be sitting at there with a lawyer waiting to sue the heck out of us. So, you know, I've been criticized for not saying why I did something publicly. It's because I'm not always the most eloquent in speech, and I might say something that gets the city sued. So I'd rather not say something and have them ask me afterwards. But I certainly don't mind, after we voted, or after y'all voted, and it's all done, sit down and say, okay, this is why we did this, and this is why we did that.
If we could just, right.
We never want to appear to be
Oh, no.
coercing you. Unfortunately, the Planning Commission has got the, you're the one body that stands the best chance of our overriding what you decide.
Right.
And that's unfortunate. And I really appreciate y'all doing what you do, because it's a tough, it's a tough job.
No problem. I, I mean, that's, I feel the same. I mean, I don't want to, I mean, we can't, we can't mingle but so much before the meetings. And I certainly understand that, absolutely. I think what I mean in, is probably after y'all have voted, at our next meeting, like in our agenda, we have a little thing there at the end that kind of tells us the status of things. And I had in mind maybe if it could just be a couple of lines in that status area that just says, city council voted unanimously, or to one, to for this tattoo parlor, and reasons stated primarily were possibly the location did not suit the business, or just something to kind of give us some idea, you know, on, on things. But other than that, no, absolutely, there should be no interaction in, in that, you know. And even with us, I think we try to, when, when we come to the Planning Commission meeting, most of the time, we have not discussed things between ourselves. Because I, and I like it that way, because it brings to the table, I think, much more spontaneity. We don't come with a set focus that we, you know, we come very open. And sometimes I certainly hear something that Jay, or Gus, or Libby, or Angie would say that would, would make me say, hey, you know, I didn't look at it that way. So we, we try to do that with ourselves. So we certainly would, you know, we wouldn't want any interaction between our two bodies before a vote, ever.
I agree with that.
And, and I think y'all will know that we've, we don't do that.
Nope, we, we understand. I just didn't want to start doing that.
No, no, no.
Because of this meeting.
No, it won't happen.
So one other thing I think that y'all need to always remember is that visibility, and it's not in sight, it's visibility of the issue. And sometimes it never starts until you get it. Where the citizens don't even know it's coming until you see it, right? And by the time council sees it, they're engaged.
That's right.
So sometimes that can lead to a different outcome.
We stir the pot for you, and you got it.
Yeah, that is, I think that's well said. I think that's well said. All right, so, so always keep that in mind too, is that one of the, one of the things that the Planning Commission process does is it brings that extra visibility. And then we all get the comments of, you know, that, that issue is now in the city, and you guys have to make a decision on it. All right, so, one thing I would ask, and I got some staff here. How can these two boards work better, or you good, with, or are we asking too much by having this interface between, okay? Send us a couple of comments of why Planning Commission went this way. Send us a couple of comments back that says, majority of council went to this, most prevalent issues were.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I think I can speak on behalf of the staff, but if anybody has an additional opinion or contrary one, now's the time to speak up. We certainly can, in, in writing staff reports for city council, do a, a, a more robust job in articulating the Planning Commission discussion in addition to the specific reasons stated. We certainly can do that. We have meetings the day after your meetings, and to the extent that you all articulate as part of your discussion, your rationale in making a decision, we can certainly redouble our efforts to make sure that gets back.
When we're 180.
When, when you're 180 out, if you articulate your rationale, one of the issues we talked about today, that was not articulated at the time, so it would be, we would have to infer what your rationale was, and I'm, I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with that. With regard to those times of disconnect, certainly Wally is there to serve as a bridge for the Planning Commission, but so am I. And so if there is a concern through the chairman, call me anytime. And if I don't know the answer, I know people that do. And, and I will help in any way possible to facilitate that. Lastly, I think the work session that the mayor had suggested that we talked about a few minutes ago with the comprehensive plan is a, is an excellent timing to, to really promote the kinds of discussion and coordination that you're talking about. So I think we ought to plan enough time to do it justice, which may be a couple of hours, rather than trying to squeeze it in between something else, and, and really take the time and listen and talk. And so I think we've got an opportunity real soon to put those kinds of things in practice.
Sounds good. I, I agree with what Angie said. I think, I mean, we're going to be doing it in conjunction with the comprehensive plan this year, but I wouldn't mind maybe a once-a-year retreat, like we do at the community center for a couple hours, maybe once a year, to just talk about our vision for the city and where we're going, just sort of a general discussion about that, so that we kind of all can hear, not before vote, obviously, but, you know, just so we can kind of all hear what everybody's thoughts are. I don't, I think that would be a great thing to do once a year.
Well, I think it's beneficial to us. It's very beneficial to us to have that input and knowledge. I mean, I, we used to.
It's also nice when you get the calls, because I, I'd like to know, we're here representing the citizens, and there's so many nights we're sitting here talking to ourselves. There's nobody even here. So I think when we hear from somebody, or you said you had three people, you know, called you, that means a lot to me, I mean, because I want to represent the citizens with our decisions, not just mine. And, you know, we can use all the feedback we can get. So please tell us if you're getting calls, if that's why, especially if that's why you voted the way you did. I think that's really important.
Okay.
Can I make one comment? I'm not going to disagree with anything Mr. Wheeler said. I'm just going to say that, in my experience coming here, we always wrote a rather robust recap of the Planning Commission meeting. And that's something that we've talked as staff about integrating into, as well as the vote, how they arrived at their decis, their decision. And obviously, when we hear back from city council, we can certainly include that information with the reports that we give to the Planning Commission on a monthly basis. So no issues with that. I, I think you're going to see a change in our reports fairly soon that's going to lay out a little bit more about the Planning Commission proceedings.
Okay, very good. Anybody else? Anybody else?
Anybody?
Productive hour. Thanks.
Well, thank you so much for your, you getting together with us. We appreciate it. Thank you to all of you.
Thanks.
Stick around for five more.
Security reasons. Do quickly, go, stand in school. Basically, March 2 of the city, we're going to the council. Now, we have TV 10, they sit in the front. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. Show some. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight. It's probably going to be out. I think we'll be standing room open. I, yeah. I'm going to get to that protest. We're going to be standing room open. It's going to be on the news tonight.[1398.51]